Well, having dealt with this quite a bit when I was a contractor, my personal recommendation would be to go with the heat pumps because I think over time you're going to have an appreciable savings in energy costs on that. There's just a point in time where you just can't patch something and it's an inefficient unit to begin with. So putting money into something like that is just a waste of time, particularly with energy costs where they are right now. So I'd recommend, you know, we're just going to have to bite the bullet and go with the most efficient systems available right now, which are heat pumps.
I agree with Mr. DeVito and this company, the MCC Airworks, they work on commercial, you know, big commercial projects and that's what's really needed with the auditorium because some of the people that came and looked at it before were people that do residential and really small things. And that's what Mr. Miller told me when I first talked to him, that they'd have to see. But his feeling about it was that we were going to be throwing good money after bad by trying to repair what was going on there because probably other parts of the system would just keep breaking down over and over again. And it comes to a point, I mean, really, when you think about it, if it's a 15-year system and we've gotten 21 years out of it, then, I mean, we've already gotten way more than we should have gotten in the first place. And I agree that I think we should just forge ahead and fix it. And then we'll save ourselves money because we're going to be saving on repairs in the future.
How, where are these going to go?
In place of the existing units, in the existing utility rooms on the east and west side of the mid mezzanine level.
Mr. Pennell? I was just curious if this is a result of the resolution that contractor contacted Ms. Lindblad gave or it's the same one again?
Ms. Bell?
Do we have funds available for this? Do we have somewhere we could tap these funds?
Mom?
We have to get the reserves according to our time estimate. Seventy-five grand.
What do you need from us? Besides $75,000?
But we have to put it out for bid.
Do we need a motion to put it out for bid?
Not yet, we don't.
Well, if we went with this one, which we seem to kind of unofficially bid this thing to start with, the recommendation that I would make, and it's early on until we get the money, is that we would have to have a resolution to not put it out for bidding due to the current circumstances. Because I think it's what, $25,000 has to be put out for bidding. So we'd have to have a resolution to wait and put it bidding. And finding the money.
Well, for one thing, money can come from the CAPC because it says right in the state statute that construction, reconstruction, extension, equipment improvements, maintenance, repairs, operation and conversion can come out of some of the CAPC funds. It also says, and I don't have it right in front of me here, "Operation of tourist promotion facilities in the city or country where the city is located if the city owns and interests in the convention center facility, this facility necessary for supporting and otherwise pertaining to the convention center." And, you know, some of this money can come from the CAPC because it even says in here that they're supposed to maintain a convention center. So that's one place we can look for money.
The CAPC doesn't have reserves, the city does. We're experiencing the largest rate of growth in the state of Arkansas with our tourism program. When you take the resources away from the engine that is driving our economy, you will hinder that ability to generate more revenue. So it is not a good business practice to take your advertising dollars, particularly in a year where the A&amp;P is keeping us 13% to 16% above last year's numbers. So the reserves are there for emergencies. This is an emergency to encumber our advertising agency, which is generating both general revenue and CAPC revenue, is probably not the best business move.
Well, it might be a good business move to get some money from the CAPC for business. It says that's what they're supposed to do. And there are also people that have said to me that the reason that the numbers are up for the CAPC collection is that the prices of food have gone up. And so that would account for the increase that the CAPC keeps weaving around. Also, the auditorium is a revenue-making proposition for the CAPC. You know, because every time something happens in the auditorium and it brings people to town, the CAPC makes 3% off of everywhere they stay, every place they eat. And if that event wasn't going on, those people might not come to town. So I really get tired of this thing with the CAPC where all they're supposed to be doing is advertising and that they're really not supposed to have much responsibility for the auditorium when it says in the state statute that they are and that it is a revenue-creating mechanism for the CAPC since they make money for people that come to town for the events that happen at the CAPC.
Mr. Pennell, did you hit your hand up?
I'm just curious if Mr. Delfield could either tell us or provide to us in our agreement that we have for 2012 said that any profits generated above CAPC cost of $94,735 would be turned over to the city. Do we know where we stand on those numbers in relationship to getting close to the year?
Preliminary figures that I've overheard, quite literally, for through Q3, auditorium income was slightly over $30,000.
Over cost?
That I do not know. You'd have to ask Rick Bright. I don't know if that's gross or net, I don't.
Well, I'd like to find out before we start trying to tackle money if we're going to be anywhere close to recouping any of this above the $94,753. I know there was extensive discussions on that one as agreement was proposed back in January, February. And let's say a whole lot of big numbers towards the auditorium. But before we say that we're going to cough up a whole bill for the $75,000, I'd like to see if we're going to gain anything from that current agreement that we have and if anything that we're doing is in line with the agreement.
Might I remind council that time is of the essence here? That if we don't get this ball moving on getting this unit replaced, I mean, we can redistribute funds at a later date. Right now, we have a mandate to get heat in the auditorium so that we can put on these shows that my colleague Ms. Lindblad says is such a benefit to the city and she was so gracious as to invite everybody to our Jazz Festival of recent note, showing that these are enhanced items in the auditorium that are being put on by the CAPC. So if you're taking money from the CAPC, you're going to lose on those shows in the auditorium. So it's imperative that we get this moving because we have a responsibility to those bookings to provide an adequate space. And at the end of the year, we can figure out where this money can be redistributed from. But right now, we have to get heat in the auditorium.
We've already had a couple 30-degree nines.
Point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
You're not supposed to be making comments unless you step up to the chair. Excuse me, that's, it's right in Robert's rules.
It's informational.
Excuse me, do you want me to read it then?
Point of order, point of order, we're discussing the auditorium heating.
We've got a point of order on the floor right now.
All right, I rule against your point of order.
I appeal the decision of the chair.
We can do this or we can move on.
We're going to do this.
I merely said we've had two 30-degree nines. If that's an issue with the table, then let the table vote on it.
That is an opinion. And if I could find it in here, it says in here that the chair.
It says in the debate.
Point of order.
State your point of order, ma'am.
If you want to discuss, if you want to talk about things, if you want to do anything except moderate this meeting, perhaps you should do as Robert's rule says and relinquish your gavel.
It's incorrect.
I appealed the decision of the chair a while back, that takes a vote.
All right, all in favor of Ms. Lindblad's point of order that I do not interject information that's pertinent, let's put it, say. Say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Is that a 3-3?
3-2.
No abstain.
Okay. So it's a tie vote? Mr. Berry?
Well, I'm going back, you know, time is of the essence. We don't need to sit around here arguing. Go ahead. We need to discuss whether or not we're going to go on with this proposal, which proposal we want to go with. We can come up with how we want to influence Mr. DeVito's industry with the money. We get the CAPC to agree to part of it or not, you know, and just go on with that. There's our money for emergencies, an emergency constitution, emergency market. And I think we need to go on and do it. And then one of the other issues that Mr. Pennell is talking about is, you know, waiving the bids. And I'd like to point out to the council that if we don't waive the bids, we would have to go in and get an engineer, which would cost us another four, five, six, seven thousand dollars per set of specifications and drawings and et cetera, and take more time. So I think time is of the essence because winter is here and we have events coming up. So we need to do something. And we can discuss and we can have debate among ourselves whether the money, how we're going to handle it later on.
Mr. Pennell?
Could our finance director give us an idea of what we have to talk about and reserves to apply to this?
Mom?
Let's step up here so they can hear what you're saying. I can't see that.
I don't actually have those numbers right at the moment. Wasn't prepared for this. I will try to email you something tomorrow.
Do you have a ballpark guess to have $100,000?
I think we have, yes.
Yes?
I make a motion that, gee whiz, we can't do anything without the city attorney, can we? That we have a resolution, two resolutions. Number one, to waive competitive bidding and number two, to put $100,000 from the reserve account towards the repair of the auditorium heating and air system.
As per it.
As per it. Because they do, that's my motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Pennell?
In case anybody's curious with the $74,000 quote, you got to add on the 0.95% bid bond. There's also exclusions for carpentry, painting, drywall, floor repair, everything that's in the exclusion list. So I think, you know, grabbing on $100,000 is probably hopefully enough. And then if we are able to benefit from any excess funding from CAPC, I think we do need to get moving on it.
Any further? All right. Would you repeat the motion, please?
Two parts, to waive competitive bidding and to draw $100,000 from the reserve account.
All in favor, say aye.
I move to split the question. And was there a second? There was a second?
James?
No, I move to divide the question.
It was two resolutions.
Two resolutions, okay.
Oh.
Resolution number one, to waive the competitive bidding.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second part, would, yes, sir.
Mr. Pennell mentioned bid bonds. I don't believe the bid bond would be required. Bid bonds are required when you're getting bids from numerous people. And that's to guarantee that that bid will be held at that price until the bid is accepted. And that's 10% or 0.95% to the total project. I think we do, we will be.
Yes.
And we need to clarify then, because we do, the city code require performance bond.
There's a 25%.
I guess we need to clarify the bid as far as that point is, would there be an extra cost for the performance bond, so what amount? But I think that's still covering.
It would cover, yeah.
We do need to ensure that the contractor, once we go forward with this, is aware that he does have to have a performance bond.
Second part is resolution number two, the $100,000 from reserve account. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both motions carried. Any further? We'll move on to number eight. Yellow Bag Research Committee is slated for the last meeting in October.
I would like to make an announcement. There will be a Yellow Bag Research Committee meeting at the Library Annex on Thursday, October 18th at 6:30 PM. I'd like to invite the public to join us and chime in. Thank you. That would be 10:18, 6:30 PM.
Moving on to number nine.
Let's discuss. Second.
Floor's open. Yes?
I think we can close this out. We got a written response back as requested from the Chair of the planning commission.
Second.
Make second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Let's get a 4-2.
Yes, sorry, 4-2.
Okay. Motion failed, the floor's still open for discussion.
What?
It was to close it out and it was 4-2.
Okay, okay, close it out, okay. Missus number 10, sales at city festivals, motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
Okay, earlier handed out the code that came from the book downstairs. And that's leading me to believe that perhaps planning is working with an older, an older code because nowhere in the code that you have in front of you does exclude private sponsorship. In 4.5602, it simply says within the boundaries of the city. So that language has already been corrected, apparently. And I had someone else read through it. I said, can you find where private events? So that does not seem to be a problem. Events, according to this code, is all events in the city. I also handed you a sheet that has five suggestions that deal just with festivals or special events. You can kind of see that it's all an evolving process. Go over those briefly if you'd like. And why those comments are on there. I just prepared the summary this afternoon. So you have the copy of the code. I would recommend adding the definition of a vendor. That is not part of the current language. And then I would also suggest language to allow sponsors to have vendors and to collect and remit the taxes through the sponsor's business license. Kind of like when craft shows are done, the sponsor collects the taxes and remits it to the state so that each vendor does not have to have a business license. And logistically, that's very unwieldy anyway for each vendor to have to have a business license. And that's typically how it's done when artists travel to other cities, they're not expected to get business license, but they might need to get a vendor's license. So that's number two. Number three, creating the form separate from the business license. Reason I say that is for a person to get a business license and vendor is listed, is a process that involves having a physical location somewhere and also having a declaration of registered agent. And that's also very unwieldy. But if small forms were drawn up similar to the outdoor sale forms, the sponsor could make sure that all her or his vendors have separate permits and that would allow that sponsor to be organized and remit to the state the taxes that were collected during that festival. Number four, allow last-minute vendor permitting. I say that because oftentimes it's a shuffle right down to the point where the festival begins. Someone wasn't able to make it in, someone else has a product that's appropriate. And so I wouldn't, and so I would recommend that the sponsor have wiggle room, so to speak, to get vendors on board until the very last minute. And number five, onsite food prep allowed if permitted by the health department. And that way, everyone is accommodated through all weather conditions. So those are my five recommendations strictly on sales at city festivals. And then looking at the code itself and seeing that over and over and over it says by the mayor, the mayor's office, the mayor shall, the mayor shall, the mayor shall. I would like to follow Judge Oms' advice and follow the code and hand this off to the mayor. And we already have the code in place, so that would take care of that. And it would free up time for me to step up codification, which I am required to do, to update indexes, which is one of the jobs of the clerk, and to organize files, three things that have been, that are way behind schedule. And so that would be a tremendous advantage. So that is my update. I'd be happy to answer questions if you'd like.
Mr. Pennell?
Well, since we haven't heard anything from Mr. Berry and Ms. Lindblad to put this on the agenda, I get the feeling that this has morphed into something else that whenever it was on the agenda before. Because every note that I have in regards to this revolved around outdoor sales. It wasn't, and somehow it got into city festivals. And I think if we're going to address that, then we need to start back where we were at when it was originally put on the agenda for discussion and what was discussed, I believe, with planning commission.
Well, see, they're all separate items. Mr. Pennell?
Well, the point of it is, we had an agenda item that morphed into festival sales. Whenever the original discussion was concerned, that was brought up was the outdoor sales in general.
Well, that's a separate concern, which will be addressed. And that's why you have this sketch here that looks kind of like a family tree because events, we now have the city permitted events and now we're getting more regional events. And so we need to, some of these areas will overlap and intermix. But I thought if I gave you an outline, then as we go through this process, it will be easier to understand that this section of code that deals just with special events is what I was asked to look at. There's another section of code that deals with outdoor sales. But this is what I was asked to look at and outdoor sales will be addressed, just not this evening with these, with this section of code. They're all coming, they're all coming into play.
Yes?
Well, I think we got, I don't want to use the word railroading because that's a little harsh, but I think, I think we got off track from addressing outdoor sales and the concerns that we're being voiced with people setting up tents and property, public property and allowing so many rummage sales and everything else that then all of a sudden it turned into city festival sales. And we've kind of, or have we just dropped that and we're now going to festivals?
Those will be coming up also.
Well, I think that ought to be a discussion at the table, not trying to do the city clerk's job or easier or harder. I just, you know, we were addressing outdoor sales and now all of a sudden we're being told we need to be considering festival sales. And I have a problem with that.
Well, again, that's why we have separate code sections. And I was asked to provide suggestions for festivals and that's why, what I did. And when outdoor sales comes up, then if you'd like to have suggestions for those, I'd be happy to provide those as well. But it, to do all of it, it was, is, it's extremely unwieldy. And I'm sure that's why we have separate sections in.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, the attachment that we got with this tree diagram was talking about the application process for a special event itself. If you look at 4.48, peddlers, solicitors and sales of festival and other event-related items that city sponsored, it's almost like we're attacking a code item that's not a problem, that wasn't the concern. I don't think we've ever discussed a concern about licensing for special events. We were concerned about outdoor sales and how many grow sales can you have in a year and tents on public, private property and whatever.
Mr. Berry?
Two separate, two separate issues.
That's my point.
Two separate issues. This issue, the comment, has to do with a section, I'm not sure where this is in our code, but we're talking about sales of festivals, events related at a city sponsored from tent in open air sand, city sponsored. And CAPC, which can be allowed with our permit from the mayor's office and CAPC or special events director. The last comment that I had was just moving, changing the wording from city sponsored to city.
Sanctioned.
City and approved committee events.
Sanctioned, yeah.
City sanctioned, yeah.
Yeah, and another part of code.
That has nothing to do with, mine was simplifying, I'm not disagreeing with what it's done, just trying to simplify this, dealing only with the events that happen around the auditorium and the parking lot right in here through here. Most of the time when we see these tents come up, selling T-shirts and stuff, city sanctioned. Got nothing to do with peddlers out on the highway or anything else.
I disagree.
That's where this order should be.
If you look at chapter 4.56, it talks about the application process for special events. It doesn't talk about any kind of sales going along with that permit application. And it's covered in 4.48, peddlers and solicitors, and it talks about sales of festivals. If that's where we need to address it, and apparently this tree diagram is trying to go into 4.48. go into 4.48 and reference in 4.56 as the guiding references, I-
From my understanding, the council approved this agenda, and number 10 is discussion of sales at city festivals. So, clerk?
September 24th, discussion of sales at city festivals. This evening, I have followed through with what the request was for this specific thing. Yes, those other sections do need to be addressed. I only focused on this one section, because that's what I was asked to do. The diagram is not meant to be misleading, it is simply to show you that festivals or special events have requirements of their own. And if the language about the vendors were added, revenue would be increased, organization would be increased, not only for the city with the $7.50 vendor permits, but also the taxes would be collected by the sponsor and remitted to the state. So just focusing on this one part of the code, I have done what I was asked to do, and these are the recommendations, because I've noticed that vendors are not really part of the permit process, and we have no way of knowing if the taxes are being collected and remitted. Outdoor sales and all that will be addressed later, but that's not what I was asked to do. So.
Ms. Powell?
I've been a little perplexed by this also, because, because here we do have, chapter, chapter 4.56, special events. Would a special event qualify as a city sanctioned event, as opposed to a city sponsored event? So, me, I keep wondering if we're not addressing the wrong, instead of changing 4.48 from city sponsored to city approved, we already have city approved special events.
Right.
So, I keep wondering why we're not addressing all the vendor stuff in special events, instead of the-
Well, that's what, that's exactly what I'm saying. If we start with festivals, as was suggested, it, you'll see that as, there will be overlapping. And, outdoor sales will be addressed, but the reason I didn't go there, so to speak, the reason I didn't go to that section of code and address that city sponsored aspect, which does need to be addressed, is that I was asked to, to deal with special events, and that's where I began. And so, when we move into these other areas, I mean, you'll see that they do interconnect. But, this is what I was asked to do, and this is what I did do, and that, that will be dealt with later.
Okay. You got your hand up.
This started at the planning commission table. We brought to you, we gave you ordinance 1953, that was put into section 4.4801, and it says that sales of festivals and or event-related items at a city sponsored event. And we, we brought this to you so that not just city sponsored events, but city approved or city permitted events that are privately sponsored could also be done. We didn't go to section 4.1, I'm sorry, I didn't get any of the information that the city clerk gave out.
4.56.
But we didn't go to 4.56. You know, if you'd like the planning commission to look at that as well, we haven't done that. We just brought you 4.48. But when I brought it to you, the city clerk took issue with it and said she would like to put in her recommendations, so y'all ask for her recommendations at this table. If you'd like for the, the planning commission to take her recommendations back to planning before we bring it back to you again, we could do that also.
Ms. Clerk?
I will say again, please, well, I'm handing it off to the mayor. I mean, I, I don't need your okay to do it. I wouldn't mind having your blessing. I'm gonna follow the code, I'm handing special events back to the mayor, and if there is any other assistance needed from me, I'm happy to help, but I, it is, there are too many evolving aspects to be dealt with outside of the group that deals with it. It would be similar to my going to the CAPC and saying, "Let me help you." I don't know that area, I don't have experience there, I'm sure the planning commission is trying to do a good thing, but I wouldn't go to the hospital and say, "Let me help you fix this."
Yes, sir.
Well, my only question is, I understand the concern for identifying vendors versus whatever, and licensing and all that, but, you know, whenever you're handed a piece of paper at the last minute, and there's a draft on the front for events, I have not seen a special, or I have not seen anything that is a problem in 4.56 other than enforcement. I think there's the problem in 4.48, which was the original concern.
That will be dealt with.
That's what needs to be dealt with. It got morphed from the original planning commission issue, and the transfer of what we were supposed to be working on at this table, and I don't see a problem with 4.56 other than enforcement.
Well, the vendors are not, there's not an avenue for vendors to be permitted and taxes collected. And so, both the city and the state are missing out.
4.56 is a totally horse of a different color than 4.48.
You are correct. It is.
If, if we need to be addressing 4.48 for outdoor sales, it shouldn't make any difference if it's festivals, garage sales, tent sales on somebody's property, public, private property, on a state highway, whatever the case might be, but I don't think we even need to be looking at 4.56. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think the whole issue started with 4.48, that's what came forward from planning, because of the concerns on outdoor sales.
What about dealing with both?
4.56 is the permit process and determining whether or not something is a city sponsored event. And that, that leads directly, if you look at the items under that chapter, starts with the permit, whether or not a banner should be flown over man and center, or spring and man, I mean, what the process is, that, you know, if, if you read 4.56, it doesn't have a thing to do with outdoor sales.
No, sir, it does not.
So why, why are we even, why is this the only code that's being highlighted and concerned with in discussion of outdoor sales? We ought to be looking at 4.48.
They both need to be looked at. I brought information based on what I was asked to provide, and that is exactly what I did. And if you were to add vendors to it, there would be a funding mechanism that would be very helpful. And, outdoor sales can be dealt with at a later date. I just did what I was asked to do.
Mr. Berry, Ms. Lindblad, y'all have any other input on the, y'all sponsored?
The planning commission.
Go ahead.
The planning commission, uh, now, under- Under peddlers and solicitors, chapter 4.48, under definitions, peddlers, section D, it's only provided and that's what this order says.
Correct.
And-
That's what we were trying to change. We were just trying to change city sponsored to city permitted.
Okay. But that, this, this doesn't say that.
Uh-uh, it doesn't. No, the one that you have is the actual code. That's the actual code that was passed when Mayor Harrison was here.
Right, yeah, right, okay.
And that is what's in our code book.
Yeah.
And so, that's what I want, that's what the planning commission sent you recommendations on, to have that changed. And it does say right now that the permit is given from the mayor's office and CAPC or special events director. And, I did speak to the mayor, and I did speak to the CAPC, and they would like for you to change that to the city clerk's office. Those two things are the only thing I'm asking that the planning commission sent here to be changed. What we need you to do is to forward this to the city attorney if you agree. If you don't agree, then you can, we'll just leave it alone.
Clerk?
The permitting process, according to code, goes through the mayor's office. All the department heads see every permit and sign off on them. Concern was expressed that even though the clerk has a system, it may be unlawful. Well, okay, let's be lawful, let's follow the code. And even if commission members want the clerk to take on tasks other than what's in the code, the mac to the fatter, as the little guy said, is, "I don't have a staff. The mayor has a staff. I don't have time to take on this growing morphing thing and guide it through against code, and ignore the things that I, that are my job. Codification, updating indexes, filing, business licenses, things that really are my job. So I am following code and handing this off, that a branch of the government with a staff deal with it, and wherever it goes with outdoor sales and all that business, it's fine. But I'm finished doing special event permits."
Ms. Lindblad?
Yeah, and here I'm a little confused, in D, that we were talking about, it says, "Sales from, of festivals and or events related, related items at city sponsored, from tent or open air stand shall be allowed by permit from the mayor's office and the CAPC or the special events director." So the mayor's office isn't just handling this, then? The CAPC is involved, and the special events director is involved, and I was not aware of that. It sounds like in the code that all they have to do is get approval from the mayor's office.
And-
Or special events director.
I'd like to point out that this isn't the, what's on the agenda. It's just an observation.
Any further? Ms. Powell?
Well, getting back to the start of the problem, kettle corn on the corner, under a tent, I don't know if 52 garage sales a year at the same location is an allowable event. When you start looking at the definition of city sponsored events, that you're talking about someone that has an approved application, and I'm assuming that the, since we're part of the regional, how was it stated, for bikes, blues, and barbecue, that that should, if it's not, should be a city, CAPC sponsored event? That for somebody to be able to set a couple tents up in a parking lot and use up all the parking for a whole complex should be something that's, that's permitted. But, again, it gets back to determining who determines city sponsored events, and that's done in 4.56 with a permit that is signed by the appropriate office. On a form prescribed by the office of the mayor. I don't see where the city clerk is even getting into it. It ought to be something that's between the mayor's office and CAPC. If it's city sponsored, we start looking at hanging banners across right-ofways, outdoor entertainment, use of public streets. When it gets down to peddling, I mean, the things that are going on right now, every one of those people should have been issued a misdemeanor ticket for violation of 4.48.02.
Mr. Berry?
Yeah, you gotta drop back to the original discussion I had, there's the definition of the difference between sponsored and sanctioned or approved. I think that's just the key word. Got nothing else to do with, with the change and heat approved, anything else. It's still the mayor, the CAPC. This is just taken from city sponsored, which is like, let's say, the folk festival, or maybe the blues festival, whatever, we eat the city sponsored, to, which includes the CAPC, because that's part of the city, versus Corvette weekend, which is not a CAPC function. But Corvette weekend would have tents set up just for Corvette items. And this just allows the city sanctioned or approved, city approved, unless the mayor approves those events. If the mayor doesn't approve it, or the police and everybody else, then it doesn't get approved. So, it's a simple, simple change, in my opinion. Got nothing to do with popcorn, kettle corn, or anything else.
Further, Ms. Powell?
So, how do we keep, I mean, really, we probably need to get even deeper and more detailed in this, because how, what is there to prescribe the, the mayor or the CAPC from being arbitrary, saying, "Well gee, you can have this Christian event in town, but you can't have this Jewish event in town, or you can't have this, some other kind of event, or, or, okay, you can have this event for seniors, but you can't have an event for kids." I mean, we're just getting deeper and deeper, and we make more laws and more laws, and, and we've got people in charge who are supposed to be making decisions and being fair to everybody, but how do we make sure that's happening?
There's a process.
Okay, thank you. So who decides what, well, the mayor, I guess the mayor decides what good cause is. Okay. I'm satisfied with that.
Ms. Powell?
I think it's semantics, and I just, it hit me when Mr. Berry was talking about it. The, I'm, I'm making assumption that the, that noise outside, motorcycle, bikes, blues, and barbecue, Corvette weekend, Volkswagen weekend, whatever, when there's a banner up there on that street, that's a special event. It's been approved by the mayor's office. That's what the code says. To have a special event, this is what you gotta do. It doesn't have anything to do with taking up the parking lot and not paying any fees for using the parking lot. It doesn't have anything to do with sales as far as 7.56. And that's what I'm saying, I've said all along, apparently there's a misconstrued idea of special- of special events versus city-sponsored events as far as what happens. And I remember, and I believe two of the people that are at this table now and one in the audience were probably at the council meeting whenever this was originally discussed, that only city-sponsored events was when there would be a banner that went up at Spring and May. Now it's gotten to the point, now we're looking at everything from, you know, one-legged pogo races to Corvette Weekend to whatever that is not city-sponsored, but it's being taken care of by Public Works hanging banners, whatever the case might be. So I think if we define, clear up the definition of special events with the application process as it goes through the mayor's office, and city-sponsored events, which to me would then be the CAPC, then you can address the outdoor sales and the peddlers that are going door-to-door, have their tents up, or whatever the case might be. Because then you have a basis. If we're looking at 4.56 correctly and applying it correctly, then the other things need to be addressed in determining that 4.56 is correct. Because there isn't a thing that I've seen in here that would preclude ... And I use the Bikes Blues and Barbecue Weekend as an example because I got thrown into the midst of the mob trying to buy some Harley stuff for Christmas presents. And it was an extension of a store out into the parking lot, under tents, which we really don't have anything that disallows that as long as when the event's over, it's taken down. Because they're already doing business. It's just like anything else where there's outdoor sales, sidewalk sale, whatever the case might be. But I've had a problem with the way that the special event slash city-sponsored events has been handled for a long time. And saying, "Okay, what are we determining? Are we telling people by a banner up on the center, or at Spring and May, that's a special event, that it's not sponsored by the city?" Because then if you want to get into it, then there's a whole lot of things that we shouldn't be sponsoring, but it can be a special event and advertised according to the code, or the code needs to be changed to special events. So yes, the two are totally separate and apart issues. And the original one that came to the table was outdoor sales. Period. Am I not ... You're sitting there shaking your head because the original information I got was outdoor sales.
It's not here yet. Outdoor sales is not here yet. We brought the festival, city-sponsored festivals.
Please don't speak off to the side.
Then I go back to the comment, and we're looking at the wrong code. We need to be looking at 4.48.
You don't need to be telling.
And not worrying about 4.56.
That's true.
This is ... All we've been given in this right here is, "Let's change 4.56."
4.48.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd move to table this issue until the next meeting.
I understand how much property we're giving.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
No.
To the next meeting.
What's going to get better?
Well, we'll get more information, because right now...
All right, let's start over. Please repeat the motion.
To table until the next meeting?
Okay. One more time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
No.
Five one.
Number 11, Discussion of Sign Orders.
I have to discuss.
Say again.
Floor is open. Pownau?
I have to sign an ordinance number and read Title VII, Chapter 7.52 Ordinance on its first reading.
Say again.
Is this for discussion only? I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear that first. Ms. Pownau, is this for discussion only?
Signing an ordinance number and putting it on its first reading.
Okay.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, since it's new orders, we need a real comment.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Pownau?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Six zero.
Got to get a number. We got to get a number first. Twenty-one sixty-one was the building permits.
Twenty-one sixty-two.
Destruction.
Yes. Thank you.
I can't say that right.
But I understand. Okay, Ordinance Number 2162. An ordinance re-adopting certain sections of Title VII, Chapter 7.52, signs that were inadvertently misnumbered. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, the city, has determined that its ability to properly enforce Chapter 7.52 signs of the municipal code will be enhanced by the renumbering of certain sections to eliminate any ambiguous references to said chapter and to enable proper enforcement of same. Whereas the City Council does not intend to change any of the currently approved language and has thoroughly reviewed each section of this chapter to ensure the current approved language remains as written. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that the attached Title VII, Chapter 7.52 signs of the Eureka Springs Code as amended as of August 13, 2007, is hereby re-adopted as if set out herein, and the Eureka Springs City Clerk is hereby directed to send the same to the current code service for inclusion in the current Eureka Springs Municipal Code. Section 2, that ordinances number 1399, number 1334A ...
1634A.
I'm sorry, thank you. 1634A, number 1660, number 1951, number 1782, number 1818, number 1848, number 1940, number 2027, number 2037, and number 2100, or parts of any ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are repealed in their entirety. Section 3, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter as a whole or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter shall remain in effect.
Pownau?
I have to approve ordinance 2162 on its first reading.
Say again.
We're going to need a real comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Same sign. Mr. DeVito?
I move to place ordinance number 21 ... I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2162 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
And then we have to do a real comment.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Pownau?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Berry? Six zero. Ordinance Number 2162, an ordinance re-adopting certain sections of Title VII, Chapter 7.52, signs that were inadvertently misnumbered.
Mr. Berry?
Did Ms. Weaver have a chance to further comment on this ordinance?
Yes.
According to her minutes, she said this ordinance, he finds that the underlying sign order to the city for the city areas is that this is not what is being addressed in this ordinance. I'll take that reading for you.
It's not the mail I got.
Is somebody making comments I didn't hear?
I didn't hear ... Mr. Pownau?
Well, when it was questioned last time, I was kind of ignored in the point because there was need ...